I apologize, I'm at a very noisy buyer's market, so I'm gonna keep you guys on mute most of the time unless I'm talking.
That sounds good.
I'll keep it on mute when you are talking.
Alright Laurie, we should be good to go.
Alright, so it is 6:05, we had a technical difficulty, I will call the meeting to order at 6:05. Tasia, would you do roll call please?
Yep, Patty Doe Forsberg, Roxanne Kendall.
Here.
Shuri Lane.
Here.
Bruce Bellargen.
Here.
Lori Bellargen.
Here.
Katie Thermas.
Here.
Marge Blil.
Alright, so our district mission, together we engage, educate and empower all learners, bridging their passions to pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. I will make a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendment. I would like to move item 16A1 to item 16C1. Would someone second my motion?
A second?
Thank you, Katie? Any comments or questions?
Is there a reason why? I'm just curious.
Yeah, there's a change to the personnel update, so we'll make it a separate item then.
Okay.
Give you details. All in favor?
Alright.
Who was the second?
Katie.
Thank you.
Alright, then motion carries. Mark, would you like to address the next item on the agendas? School board meeting livestream and video recording.
Oh sure, I'll do it from up here. So, you know, there's a lot of requests for it, what was it, the?
July 19th.
19th meeting. And we got dinged by YouTube, they pulled it. And the only thing we know as of right now is because of, how do they say it, unfactual medical speech or what have you, so they pulled it. And you get three strikes and you're out. This was our warning. So we've got three more if we violate this. So we're filing an appeal because there is, you know, there's some exceptions with public entities and when you have public comment because we really don't have control over what, you know, people say at public comments. So we don't know if it was something that was set at board level or public comment level this time. So we're gonna file this appeal so we can kind of learn from what happened. And so I would suggest, you know, because if we get three strikes, we're in a mess. I would suggest that the next couple meetings, till we get this, the understanding of what we have to do or can't do, that we don't stream the public comment portion, they can talk to the board, but we just hold off on that or we don't publish that part until, you know, we know. Just as a temporary thing till we, so we understand.
So does that mean we wouldn't start the live stream? Like, we just did roll call and approved the agenda, so just wait to start the livestream until after all that?
That could be one of the options we do. And again, temporary, temporary thing until we understand, you know, what went wrong.
Did they give us a timeframe when we might hear back from them? I mean, it's YouTube.
No, you know, I got Trevor involved right away because I don't want to lose our YouTube, you know, privileges. So he said, we should just go ahead and file the appeal and I don't know what the timelines and things like that are, but we'll do it right away so, so we know. So I would say, you know, if we all kind of take that into consideration, that, you know, we just have to be careful and go ahead and do it today the way we normally have. And then, you know, if we don't get an answer by our next meeting, maybe look at something where, you know, we delay that portion or we record it separately until we get, you know, some direction on what to do. It's all, never had this happen before.
Alright, did anybody else have any more questions or comments for Mark on this item?
Well, in the meantime, would you maybe be doing a back, can you back it up?
Back it up.
We do have, we do have them recorded and we have the July 19th meeting recorded as well, so we still have that record. But we're waiting to publish it until we hear back from YouTube about the appeal because we don't want to just publish it and then.
So we'll figure it out, we'll have it figured out by next meeting.
Are there alternative means of us publishing it on something other than YouTube?
I don't have an answer for that.
Yes.
Alright. Public comment then, Corey Miller. Let's see, the board will receive such input without comment or take no action relative to any items brought forth. This is in direct relation to open meeting law. They may direct the direct district administrator to consider such an item at an appropriate place on the agenda or a subsequent meeting. The board has set aside 20 minutes for this purpose, please limit comments to three minutes. And those wishing to make a public comment, would you please begin with your name and address?
Corey Miller, 247 Church Road, Star Prairie. I open and roll my two kids here in Somerset. Tonight, I thank for the benefit of the community that's been very much following and wanting frequent responses from the lead the parents group on the effort of the recall. We want to let that whole community, since we received such a massive immediate response from that inquiry, that, that recall is certified and moving forward. So we're happy that democracy is being, finally taking effect. We've worked really hard, a quick summary, I think, of that is valuable for the community. We've worked hard for a few months to get the attention of the board as a organized group of parents, not a fringe, not radical, not violent, just an organized thoughtful group of parents. And anytime a group like that organizes and is raising their hand and then jumping and then doing a little screaming and still can't get even reasonable response from the board or recognition of the concerns, and we don't see our concerns being discussed or week after week, month after month, they don't hit the agenda for some reason or another. If they do, they're just quickly, you know, shuffled under the rug, seems like things are determined before the board meeting happens. And so hopefully we don't have to resort to recalls in the future. I think if we do this better in the future, we have a better response when a group of parents or teachers or whoever gets together and says, hey, we are all seeing a similar problem, we would like it addressed. Hopefully in the future, we have better communication with the board and administrators to resolve these concerns without having to go to such drastic measures. So with that said, we are still very concerned about the fall. And although the mask mandates temporarily, we see plenty of opportunities. We follow the same sources that the board has been blindly following for the last year and a half. CDC and the like, all the way down to St. Craig County, they all fall in lockstep without a whole lot of debate back and forth. And we see masks coming, so this is our next effort you're gonna see on your email. 30 seconds, thank you. That there's, and you guys should be following, school boards around the country the same way we do. And hundreds of them have used this legal precedence that's been set where they make it illegal for you to enforce masks on our kids or other them if we want, if we send our kids to school without masks. So just to let you know, transparency, that's our plan. And we don't want to have any issues there, so we, you know, hope that maybe tomorrow night we can have more comment on that. So there you go.
Thank you, Corey. Monet, can I ask, are you gonna hand that out?
We want to scan them in first, we have a whole bunch of them signed, but we'll send them via email and they'll be scanned. We'll give you the originals.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Alright, Monet Scarecutt 444, Random Drive, Amory, Wisconsin. I just want to highlight two things that are on the agenda today. I see that there are policies on the agenda for review and I look forward to hearing of what these policies mean. In all honesty, reading legal documents and policies isn't in my wheelhouse, so clarification is always important to me. It's not in my busy day-to-day activities. So I appreciate clarity, especially on this 5310. I know it's been adopted in 2015, it states the board shall directly notify the parents of students at least annually at the beginning of the school year of the specific or approximate dates during the school year when any non-emergency invasive physical examination or screening is scheduled or expected to be scheduled for students. If the examination or screening is, one, two, three, you have the policy note. The term invasive physical examination means any medical examination that involves the exposure of private body parts or any act during such examination that includes incision, insertion, or injection into the body, which does not include hearing, vision, or social, or supportive screening. So, in all honesty, I don't understand what that means. Clarification, I would greatly appreciate. And I'll be waiting on that, that is why my next concern was what Mark talked about. It's I wanted to watch the July board meeting, I was not able to. So I would like to watch this one so I can hear the clarity, I can't stay the whole time. So it's important that these meetings are online. I know Mark sent a email and at the end it said, might not be a bad conversation to have it once around the table so the public knows that we cannot tolerate misinformation. I would think it's important to not tolerate YouTube censoring us. We speak up here not only for you, but for the public. They want to have, they want to know questions that our parents have. We're, we're the parents, we're a community. So it's not just to you, we want everybody to be able to hear public comment. These cannot be censored, that is very important to us. So we, you know, we aren't going away, we want to watch these board members, we're here, we're wide open. And we want to be involved and informed of the education of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Monet. Jackie?
Hi, my name's Jackie Olson, address is 273 County Road M in Star Prairie. So everything I'm about to say is information I found directly on the CDC website and I can give you the citations if you'd like to look it up yourself. I saw this, I say this due to the fact that the public comments and video from the last special board meeting were taken down from YouTube due to mis, alleged misinformation. So here we go, on Tuesday afternoon, the CDC recommended a universal indoor masking for teachers, staff, students, and visitors for 2K through 12 schools regardless of vaccination status. Where is the evidence to justify masking children in schools? According to the CDC director herself, Rochelle Walensky, it doesn't exist. She said, and I quote, "We don't have any evidence that the Delta variant makes kids sicker." And just last month, on July 9th, the CDC argued masks were not necessary for school-aged children. The CDC also had an entirely different message on masking the vaccinated individuals and I'm sure some of your teachers are asking the same questions. And the CDC changes once again. Also, from the CDC states, although outbreaks in schools can occur, multiple students, multiple studies have shown transmission within school settings typically lower than levels in the community transmission. So why are we mandating masks in children? Look no further than the teacher, teachers' unions who have been lobbying the CDC to issue mask guidelines for students. In May, when the CDC repealed mask guidelines for the vaccinated, the country's largest teachers' union insisted kids still wear them. You think you can compel or force students to wear masks? That they have expressed, expressly have a right to refuse. America stands for freedom of speech, freedom of association, freedom of religion, and they are first freedoms that are enumerated in the First Amendment. Why? So that we can do exactly what we're doing right now, which is speaking truth, speaking together truth and we have a free marketplace for ideas. The 14th Amendment of the US Constitution protects against the states taking a person's life, liberty, and property without due process of law. The Supreme Court interpreted this to encompass the right to the individual to marry, establish a home, and bring up children and generally to enjoy these privileges long recognized as an orderly pursuit of happiness by free men. And more recently, the interest of parents in the care, custody, and control of their children is perhaps the oldest fundamental liberty interest recognized by the Supreme Court. And I quote, "It is cardinal with us that the custody, care, and nurture of the child reside first in the parents." You're trying to coerce people to do what you think is best for them and that is absolutely against our constitutional rights. This right to parents without government oversight overlaps with our constitutional interests. Not only do we have constitutional rights and freedoms, the federal government has limited specific enumerated powers and cannot overstep our constitutional rights. Here in the US, we should be proud to be Americans because it's the government's obligation, duty, and responsibility to protect our rights, including the right to refuse. Simply put, these are not your children, they're ours and they too have rights. Their health and safety are our responsibility and not yours. Masking our children in schools is not rooted in science and even the CDC director herself said, we don't have any evidence. You don't have the evidence, children are little to no risk of spreading the virus. There are zero cases in the world where a student has infected a teacher.
Thank you, Jackie.
Yet you want to mask our most vulnerable children, not your responsibility, it's ours. Thank you.
Shannon, would you like to give your information on the high school schedule?
I'm gonna hit present for me, that'll just be easier. Alright, thanks. I have stood in front of you multiple times at this point now over the last probably four years and given you lots of updates about the schedule, but wanted to just be a little bit proactive and just kind of bring you up to date regarding a couple of changes that we're making this year. Every year, we have tweaked and kind of twisted and turned the schedule based off of feedback that we've received from students and teachers and things that we kind of see to make sure that we are being as responsive as we can in terms of making sure we are basically putting together the best schedule we possibly can for our kids. So none of this will be new to you, these first couple slides, which you do have access to with links on the agenda. I changed the settings, I think you first tried and now you should be able to get in there. Every time I talk about the schedule, the why never changes. We always start with the strategic plan, which really kind of gave us the license initially to kind of explore looking at a different schedule four years ago. Looking at the strategy and the different result statements, really specifically looking at utilizing flexible scheduling and taking a look at personalized learning so that students can begin to take on ownership of their education. And school really becomes something that we do with kids and not to kids. We are coming close to the end of our current strategic plan and this really is what we've been charged with as a district in terms of ensuring this is what our kids can do when they graduate and leave here. We believe at the high school that maintaining what I would consider a traditional system within our school does not put our kids in the best position possible to be able to do these things. And as you see, the hard part about this is that neither of these things are easily measurable. It'd be much easier if we said, hey, whenever a kid graduates, we're gonna make sure they have a 23 on the ACT. That's super measurable. These things take a different lens in terms of how do we measure to see if our kids are actually able to do these things? Certainly along with student achievement, but some other things that we have in place in our building that we believe put our kids in the best position possible to be able to do these things when they leave us. I'm not gonna read this all word for word, but I'm very passionate about talking about the fact that our current school system for the most part still looks like it did 150 years ago. Really, that system at the time it was set up was designed to sort and rank students and shift them off to a factory, intentionally creating a system of boredom to be able to set kids up, so when they left there and went to the factory, that's what they experienced. Unfortunately, most of our school systems still look like that now. One of the best examples I like to use is that if you think about your doctor's office or your dentist's office and there's no way that you would allow your doctor's office to still look like it did 150 years ago. The amount of changes that has occurred in the health system should mirror the amount of change that's happening in our education system, yet year after year, we fight tooth and nail to maintain school the way it's always been done. So we have really embraced the fact that school and our role as educators and teachers really looks different than it did even 15, 20, 25 years ago. Mainly because of this. We have to be very responsive to the fact that our kids now learn differently. With the invention of YouTube, TikTok, maybe your kids are on TikTok all day long, right? Kids learn different than they did 25 years ago and the only access they had to information was a teacher and a textbook. Now kids have 24-hour access to information. YouTube, I'm sure as adults you've experienced these things too. And as a result, we believe really strongly that our school system should not look like it did when most of us went to school. So we are really passionate about engaging in some tough conversations and conversations that are really deep rooted in how most of us have a really strong philosophy about how school should look. Grading, for example, we've had lots of hard conversations in our building about grading. I have a teacher sitting right over there shaking his head like, yep, we have, right? You know, how we handle late work, just all the traditional things of school and really taking a different lens to make sure that it better reflects, our environment better reflects the society that kids are gonna go into when they leave us. And we believe our system that we have set up right now better prepares kids to do that. So a couple of things I want to talk about just in terms of the schedule. So we just finished year three of our flex mod schedule. So year one was the first year that we had, I would say, full implementation, 18, 19. That was what I would consider a typical year. The school year was uninterrupted. Year two, the year 19, 20, we had the shutdown in March, so became kind of phase one of COVID interruption. And then last year, obviously, an entire year that was riddled with what I would consider educational disruption through COVID. Yes, we were open all year, which was awesome and we're very thankful for that. But to think that day in and day out, we still did not have a significant amount of educational disruption happening to our kids would be irresponsible. So obviously, we did not plan on these two years being kind of riddled with COVID, which has, I would say, certainly impacted some of the work we've done within our building with our schedule in particular in terms of being able to measure its effectiveness. It's really hard to measure when you have almost half a semester that was shut down in a year, for example, of no state assessments. Then we have last year and we ended up having to make a lot of last-minute changes to our schedule, the day-to-day interworkings of the schedule to accommodate for COVID. Things that we never planned on doing. As a result, I wrote some of those things down here. Changing the lengths of our mods and shortening those and doing some other things that actually increased the amount of flex time that kids had. And for the most part, kids had more flex time than we ever would have wanted due to trying to be proactively planning for if we had a shutdown. And that's a very complicated system that we tried to figure out to minimize some of the disruption. But as you can see, looking at those three years, having one full year so far of what I would consider full implementation has kind of pushed back our timeline in terms of really being able to analyze the effectiveness of the schedule. Can I tell you, do we see lots of awesome things happening? Yep, we have a whole year this year where the only state data that we had for assessment was the juniors that took the ACT and that information is still embargoed and I've never been able to share it with you and it was awesome, right? But unfortunately, those things I can't share with you. And here, you know, looking at the different things that were impacted in our building, I would argue it's probably not a fair assessment at this point to say, okay, after year three, is it working or is it not working? Arbitrarily, do we believe in what we're doing? Absolutely, are there great pieces of the schedule? Yes. Are there things that we've already looked at for this coming year that we're changing? Absolutely, which kind of gets to my next slide here. So last year, we ended up having to shorten our mods to 15 minutes per mod to increase the amount of sections that we had for classes to better accommodate social distancing within our classrooms. Not ideal, we knew that going into it, but due to COVID, felt like that was something that we had to do. This year, our mods are going to 27 minutes per mod, so instead of 23 mods per day, we have 14 mods per day. Our core math and English classes, which would be English 9, English 10, English 11, and Algebra 1, Geometry, and Algebra 2, we consider those our core classes. Their instructional minutes are going up from 208 per week to 255. All other courses in our building, instructional minutes are going from 208 to 225. I know teachers are excited about being able to increase some of that class time and a little bit less coming and going, which happens with 15-minute mods. And this will also provide for a much better balance for student flex time. The other thing that we're putting into our schedule this year is we have one dedicated mod per day, which is the fourth mod of the day. One dedicated mod where there are no classes running during that mod and that will be the mod that students will be getting reading and math intervention. So our reading and math teachers will be solely dedicated to providing interventions for students. And we also have a wide variety of other things that will solely be dedicated to addressing student achievement or social emotional learning for our kids. So for example, our counselors are gonna be running some groups that they just have not had the opportunity to do within the way our current schedule was running. Becky Olson is going to do mindfulness in the art room during that mod, every day for kids that want to participate in that. We have two teacher, or a counselor and a teacher that navigate our restorative justice program and it's always been a little bit difficult to find time during the day for that to work. So we have been really trying to be intentional about how we're gonna use that time since we're taking a whole mod out of the day, but really to ensure that we're addressing students that need those significant interventions, especially coming off the last year and a half that we've had with some of those disruptions that I mentioned to our student achievements. We're really excited about that. And then for our ninth and 10th graders, we are implementing an actual curriculum that we're gonna be using in our advisory. We found, have found over the course of the last couple of years that those kids really need some intentional skill building, not because of the schedule, but when you have 14 and 15-year-old kids, really kind of thinking about, again, some of that social emotional piece to help build skills, resilience, we're talking about all kinds of things. We're excited about that to have more of a formal curriculum to follow within our advisory. So those are really kind of the three big changes. The biggest one is this one up on top. We've been looking for a way to increase some of our instructional time. So we're excited about how we were able to kind of finagle that and make that work in the schedule. One particular thing that I know has come up twice from Marge at the once around the table was a parent survey. So I want to make sure that I address that. In terms of getting feedback from our students and staff, that has happened frequently, both formally and informally. That feedback is how, almost on a semester basis, we have been making tweaks and additions and subtractions to our schedule based off of the lived experiences of teachers and students that are moving through our hallways every day, going through the schedule. In September, both our students and staff will be getting a survey from, and I'm gonna talk more about this in a minute, through our work that we're gonna be doing with what's called high reliability schools. It is not specifically a survey on the flex mod schedule, but it's a survey about, again, your lived experience at the high school and a similar survey is going to be going to middle school and elementary kids as well, which I'll talk about in a minute. But that'll be another nice way for us to be able to get some feedback from students and staff in the building. In terms of parents, because I understand, and again, I don't know exactly the concern that was brought to Marge. I haven't had a concern brought directly to me about a survey, so I'm kind of just shooting from the hip here a little bit. But in 1920, our first year of implementation, or I'm sorry, our second year of implementation, we had a survey planned to go out to parents in April and the shutdown happened the month before that. And so it didn't seem with all that we were navigating at the time that a parent survey on the flex mod just didn't rise to what I've considered top priority at that point. Again, last year, due to the amount of changes that we had to make and all the things that were happening in the schedule, again, a parent survey did not seem appropriate at that time. Moving to this year, as I mentioned, parents will also receive a survey based off of some of the work that we're gonna be doing with high reliability schools. Again, I want to be very clear, the survey is not, should the flex mod stay or go? The survey is really about what is the feedback that you see or would like to give based off of your child's lived experience at the high school. And then aiming to do another parent survey in the spring, fingers crossed if our year progresses in a more normal fashion and maybe doesn't see as many disruptions as we have with COVID in the past. You know, feedback from parents when it comes to the schedule is extremely important and really helpful for us because I don't necessarily hear the things that parents may hear when a student goes home and says, I like this about the schedule, I don't like this about the schedule, I like this about the high school, I don't like this. So that feedback is really important. It's just most beneficial if it comes to me directly. That way I can help navigate with a parent or maybe walk through some concerns and figure out the best way to address that. Okay, that's what I have about the schedule. Typically, when I talk about it, I get really passionate and fired up, so I talk forever, so I'm trying to really be... Stop it right there. Go ahead.
I'm not timing you.
What's that?
I'm not timing you.
Oh, good, okay. I know, okay. So more to come, I try to be as proactive as I can in bringing updates to the board, you know, at least a couple of times a year, I think I counted. I think this is my ninth presentation to the board about the schedule, so just trying to make sure I give you information so you know what it is and what it isn't because that's typically the biggest battle. So with that said, I'm gonna switch gears and move to graduation, okay? Over the last couple of years, I've received lots of questions from families regarding, why do we graduate so late? Because we graduate later than any school in the surrounding area every single year, okay? So I thought, well, after this past graduation, let's throw out a survey to the class that, or the parents that are going to be seniors this year and let's just see if people have a flavor for potentially moving graduation up. If we do, great, if not, we want to keep it where it is, that's great. So right now, currently at this moment, graduation is scheduled for Sunday, June 5th. Just for frame of reference, Memorial Weekend this year is the weekend of May 27th. And so the recommendation that I proposed to parents was a graduation date of Sunday, May 22nd. As I mentioned, we are the only school in our conference to graduate after Memorial Day weekend. So we wanted to find a date that kind of moved that up a little bit and really wanted to stay away from holding graduation on any part of Memorial Day weekend because we have so many families that travel, go to cabins. Families may want to use that weekend for a graduation party, for example. Families may want to use that weekend for a graduation party, for example. And we wanted to maintain the tradition of having graduation on a Sunday afternoon. So I sent about a month ago a survey out to the parents of the class of twenty two. I had sixty responses, technically sixty one, because I had one come to me via email after the survey closed. So these are the three questions that I asked. Are you supportive of moving graduation to the twenty second? Would you prefer to keep it on June fifth, or I'm fine either way? So you can see here kind of where that landed. I had three people, it doesn't even show up here, but three people indicate they wanted to keep the date on the fifth. Otherwise, this is kind of where we landed. So this is really informational, letting you know that the plan right now is I'll be sending out communication to parents this week, letting them know that the date is going to move up, which I think will be good for even some other reasons inside the building with seniors. Because it's really hard when we're graduating so late and seniors are still kind of hanging around when they're ready to be done. So this will solve lots of, lots of things.
So will their last day still be May twentieth?
So I know, I should have looked at the schedule. So typically, so Sunday, so the twentieth typically is like our senior picnic. So kids come in the morning, we do graduation rehearsal, and then we head off and do a picnic. So I would imagine their last day will be, right now, I'm thinking Wednesday of that week that we can plan for finals and equipment turn in and those kinds of things, so. Okay, questions on that?
Well, a long time ago, high school staff brought up the concern, especially the teachers who had more than one grade level in a class. The concern of not when the graduation ceremony was so much, but when the seniors were done with class because of scheduling finals and still having the juniors in the class and with the curriculum, what do you teach first? And what do you continue with the juniors after the seniors have already left? Has this been addressed with those teachers who teach that level?
So part of the reason that we even went this far is sending out a survey was because teachers the last three years have come to me and said, how can we move graduation up? I mean, just so, I don't have a concern, the staff would have a concern regarding, not being able to get in everything they typically would get in. Okay, no questions on that? Good, okay. All right, so the final thought that I have just about this, as I mentioned, I would like to suggest potentially on a separate time, maybe a special session, or I'm free anytime, sitting down with new board members and really doing more of a full comprehensive orientation to the schedule and the why behind it and kind of how we got here. That was not the intent tonight, and I know Shereen and Marge aren't here. But I, I would like to kind of put that on an annual each time we get new board members, you know, making that maybe part of some sort of orientation, just simply because of the amount of questions that, you know, people at times get about the schedule and hear things about what it is, what it isn't. I think it'd be great just for the board to have some more in-depth information. So I would just like to offer, I'm happy to do that for new board members if people find that helpful. Then you've got a little bit of an elevator speech of people asking in the grocery store, what in the world are they doing up at the high school? And you've got some background to be able to talk about that. The other thing I mentioned is just open communication. If, you know, if you hear anything about a concern at the high school, please, you know, send that person to me, that way I can best help try and navigate what some of the concerns are and try and hit it head on. So, all right, totally switching gears, okay? As I mentioned in one of my previous slides, I talked a little bit about high reliability schools. So we are really excited to district-wide engage in this research-based work, which is really all about how do we ensure in our district that we are working on the right work, is the best way to explain it. And the term high reliability school actually came from the business world first, where all kinds of business people were doing lots of research about what makes an organization highly reliable. What makes an organization really ensure that, are they doing what they say they're doing and are they getting results? So over the course of time, the guru in education, if you've heard of Robert Marzano, he really grabbed this and said, well, hey, if they're doing this in the business world, what would this look like in education? Because really, for some pieces of this, it's no different, right? We want schools to do what they're saying they're going to do. We want to ensure the schools are kind of walking the walk and producing what they're supposed to be producing, which is student achievement, right? So after really going through the last year and a half, experiencing what we have with the pandemic and COVID, administratively, we were really looking at a silver lining, one piece of the pandemic being a silver lining, of being able to use this as an opportunity to really kind of reboot and take a look at, at a really high level, some things that we're doing in the district. And is it working or is it not working? And is it producing the results that we're supposed to be producing? And really kind of going back to the foundation, so I'll give you a good example. So PLCs, professional learning communities, in our district have been employed for twelve years. Ten years?
Yes.
Yes, we've been thinking about it for twelve, for sure.
Yeah, we started all.
There you go. So, which is a long time, right? And every year, we've done a lot of training and all kinds of things about PLCs. And, you know, we want to use this as an opportunity to evaluate, how are things going within our professional learning communities? One example, right? Within our building, really examining the culture of each building, what's working and what's not working. Looking at instructional strategies in our classroom, what's working and what's not working from a research-based lens, not because Shannon says so, right? But really looking at educational research and what, what the educational researchers are saying. These are the things that produce the best results in education. And then we take those things and take a look at, okay, what does that look like here in Somerset at each respective building? So we did a lot of research and took a lot of time to kind of figure out, so what work would that look like? And what help do we potentially need to be able to analyze what we're doing in this building with another outside lens, aside from just administrators, teachers, and employees? Which is really kind of how we got here to looking at Dr. Marzano and his high reliability schools work. And I want to be really careful in saying like, this is not an initiative, it's not a program, it's not a thing. It's really a lens regarding how we look at the work that we're doing in our building and is it working or is it not working? And if it is working, celebrate, that's awesome. And if it's not working, what do we have to look at and tweak and change, basically prove or improve, right? So at the board level, we thought that showing you, this is a seven-minute video, that this is the best way to give you kind of a fifty thousand foot view of what is this work? Because you're going to be hearing us talk a lot about high reliability schools, kind of shortened HRS, okay? So we're going to play this. Sarah just gave you a handout that gives you kind of another overview of what specifically we're going to be looking at. And then we'll kind of wrap it up and go from there.
I'm Dr. Phil Waring, Associate Vice President of Marzano Research. And I want to thank you for considering the high reliability schools model. High reliability schools framework is Marzano Research answer to long-term school improvement with short-term specific areas of focus. High reliability, the concept of high reliability is, is not new, but it certainly is new to education. High reliability has been in the business world for a considerably long time. But now, in the era of accountability, schools are expected to be high reliability organizations. Over the last several years, we've put together this framework which allows schools to really pursue the concept of being a high reliability organization. High reliability organizations have several characteristics. One is they cannot tolerate high levels of failure. Second, they monitor their, their systems for errors and then they immediately take action to correct those errors before they become system-wide failures. Within our model, we've really taken what we know from forty years of educational research. We've taken some things we've learned from looking at many other professions, such as the United States military and what we've learned from other businesses. And we've really combined it to make a model that we think works quite well. There are five levels for a high reliability school, and they're organized in a hierarchy. The first level in the hierarchy is a safe and collaborative culture. That's really the soil that you plant everything else in that you're going to attempt. Safe culture for students, for parents, for teachers, but also collaborative culture so that the professional learning community's concept is present and your collaborative teams and your collaborative setup truly makes it so that you borrow each other's brains. And we really have some nice pieces in there that help a school, help school leaders kind of think about what might that look like in our system. The second level is effective teaching in every classroom. Certainly, we know from research that the single most important factor in learning is the quality of teacher in the classroom. So within our high reliability schools level, we've really outlined some things the school can do to really pursue that as an ideal. Some ways that they can really help create a culture of growth for teachers as learners. So that really to build effective teaching in every classroom, it's, it's about teachers as learners as well, the, the whole school as a learning organization and continually adding to the pedagogical ability of people in every classroom. The third level is really about guaranteed viable curriculum. Really getting clear about what is it we want our kids to learn? How long is it going to take us to teach this to them? And what are the key points that we need to make sure are involved in that curriculum? Now, the first three levels, safe and collaborative culture, effective teaching in every classroom, and guaranteed viable curriculum, we call those non-negotiable for all schools. Those, those, those levels each, of course, work in a hierarchy, but every school is going to work on those three pieces. The last two levels are optional. Certainly, they provide a higher level of reliability, but they are optional for schools. Level four is standards reference reporting of student progress. What that means is that once you've identified the essential learnings that you want students to have, that now you have a way to report not only where they begin on those learnings, but their growth in those learnings across all disciplines. It's really a, a next level up, certainly not required, but the next level up above level three to add high reliability to your organization. And it really deals with an examination of your grading practices, your assessment practices, and of course, your student reporting of progress practices. The fifth level and the top level in high reliability is competency-based education. And really what competency-based education means is this, that schools replace the constant of time with the constant of learning. And now, a student can progress as fast or as slow as he or she needs to within different contexts. Within a competency-based system, it would not be uncommon for a student to be at one level in math, but maybe a different level in English. Because really, it's based on their, their opportunity to meet and show that they are competent in each of the essentials and then being able to move on as soon as they're ready to do so. All five levels together are organized in the hierarchy. And to get to level five, a school must make sure that all the other levels are in place. Again, level four and five are optional, but really levels one, two, and three, critical for all schools in the age of accountability. The high reliability, high reliability schools process begins with some baseline level data. And we've created surveys for that purpose. And Marzano Research does a really nice job of creating a report for you based on the surveys, really allowing you to just see where we at in each of the different areas that are critical to the levels of, of the high reliability model. Once you get the survey levels back, then we will work directly with you to really analyze that data and say, okay, what are you doing well? Can you substantiate the fact that you're doing that well? And now, what might be your areas of strategic planning to move yourself forward? As you move forward, this really makes a nice way for school leaders to focus it on their, on their largest areas of need for strategic planning. And really, I think for me, having been a school principal superintendent and having done this kind of work in the past, it's a very distinct way to say, what are we going to concentrate on? Rather than chase all different kinds of initiatives every year. It's about saying, this is the journey we're going to go on, this is what has proven to work. Now let's get on the journey and let's not lose our way. What we've really found so far is that schools who have engaged this work have gotten real clear about what it is they need to do to really focus on the end goal, which is student achievement. We use two particular pieces in, in the high reliability schools model, become new vocabulary. But they are leading and lagging indicators, and they are involved in each level. Leading indicators are the conditions of best practice, the ideals that you want to get going in your schools at each level. The lagging indicators are the data or evidence that shows those conditions are in fact present. And in fact, the lagging indicators is then what are used to monitor, to make sure, are the things happening in our school that we really need to happen? Again, you take it one level at a time, it's organized in a hierarchy. We'll partner with you to, to move you through the model. But we really feel like it's one of the most solid things that we've seen in a number of years, especially in the era of high accountability, that allows schools to focus on long-term continuous improvement with short-term specific areas of focus. We have information on our website, certainly contact us if you're interested. And we hope that you'll continue your journey with high reliability schools model. Thank you.
All right. So isn't that exciting? We're excited. So, there we go. So as you mentioned, you know, one, two, and three are the non-negotiables, four and five, optional. And we're starting with level one. And we're really excited about, you know, you mentioned the surveys, I mentioned that early in my presentation, about starting with getting feedback from students, parents, and staff about how you, how do you think things are going? And that will help us then build a plan for what are we going to focus on and get really tight on? And potentially, what are some things we're maybe doing in our buildings and our classrooms that we don't need to do anymore? And that kind of goes back to what I mentioned about a silver lining of the pandemic from an educational standpoint, is that it really has forced us to reevaluate almost everything that we're doing in education. Is it working, is it not working? It forced us to be extremely innovative with creating things that we probably never thought possible until we were forced to do some of these things in education. But looking at level one, so Sarah gave you a copy of a handout that kind of goes through all five levels and looking at the different indicators for each level. So, we're excited about this because as you kind of look here, right? It'd be really hard for anyone to argue like, I don't think it's worthwhile to spend time on making sure that we have a safe and collaborative culture in our building, right? As he mentioned, that's the foundation for everything that we do within our schools. We really can't do much more until we ensure we have an environment for our students and our staff where they feel good about coming to school, they feel like it's a safe place and it's a positive place to be. So, we will be looking at these eight indicators. In terms of our focus and where we put a ton of energy will be the results of our survey. And, you know, each building might look different too. The high school staff might identify, you know, one point one is something we really need to tackle. And the middle school might say, yep, we're good there. So while we're doing this district-wide, once this gets rolling, each building then will really be navigating this in terms of their needs, feedback that they get, and kind of where we go from there. So, we're excited about it. We've already done a couple of trainings administratively so we can kind of wrap our heads around the best way to lead these efforts. And we'll keep you posted from there.
So how does this work? So you do a survey, you know, you start out with a survey.
Yep.
And then it goes to Marzano?
Yep.
And is this just, you know, another place that where we're going to be sending data for somebody else to put together? I mean, we've, we've done this.
So, so this is really specific to each of the tier. This isn't like a general survey. These will, the survey itself, the questions are all directly tied to those eight indicators from level one only. So it's super honed in. And what that, what, what we're excited about is the fact that once we deliver the survey, part of that is that we do get as administrators some coaching on how to lead where our biggest areas of need are. And that's kind of what's been lacking as we've tried to continuously work on that improvement. We, you know, we work and we are dabbling in the first three. It's not like we haven't done work in levels two or three, we have a lot of things that we've already accomplished there. But to hone in on one thing, it's manageable. And it is like my goal, and if we've learned anything over the last eighteen months, that if we don't have a safe place for people to come and go to work and learn, it's not going to happen. And so to build that foundation, I'm excited about the feedback that we're going to get because I don't see everything, I'm not everywhere, we, we can't possibly see every piece. So if there's something that a parent is experiencing and they get to reflect it on that survey, that's a way for us to either to say, hey, high five, we're doing an amazing job, or hey, we got to look at this as a, as a middle school, then we have a duty in order to serve our community to do that. So, you know, I know.
I hear what you're saying.
No, so then I, I want to know, so, so does he have a curriculum? Is this where this is headed? Or I'm not understanding what the deal is.
So we get a coach that works with us along the way, who will help not give us the answers. Because my building is different than Shannon's building, which is different from Pam's building, and we all have different needs. And so this. And so this person is the same thing that I do with my teachers. I don't give them all the answers when I'm coaching them after an observation. I ask questions to get them to reflect. And then we, as a leadership team and my building, we work together to say, okay, if indicator 1.3, we don't have formal roles in the decision-making process regarding new initiatives that may be coming, how can we create those? And so then we create something that works for us in the middle school, which may look very different than the high school or the elementary school. But it's giving clear communication in a very safe manner for all parties involved. And maybe I did not answer your question.
No, I mean, is there some districts where you've seen actual outcomes from adapting this?
So there are, if you go out to their website, there are districts all over the country that have received certification in usually, mostly the first three levels. There are a few out there that have levels four and five. I think the nearest one to us. So I've connected with two from Minnesota before we even got too far into this of like, tell me more about this, what has been your experience? And both said, best thing we could have ever done. Identified all kinds of areas that we either didn't see. And I think the best thing about this is that these are all the research-based proven indicators if you want the best results in your organization. And Marzano and crew then coming in kind of on the backside also with another lens, another eye, taking a look at some of the evidence that we have to produce. So for, for example, 1.3, I'll use as an example. If through the survey, it came through that, yep, the middle school staff said, we are really rocking this one. Then the next piece of that is, and that's kind of where the leadership comes in, is providing evidence to show, well, okay, you guys said you're doing such a great job and having teachers be involved in the decision-making process, show me, right? And those are some of the pieces right now that we're excited to kind of dive into from a district and a system level of, instead of just arbitrarily like, hey, things are going really well, or we feel really good about this indicator. That's kind of what I mentioned before, the mantra is prove or improve. So either prove that things are going well and you're rocking it. And if it's not, then what's the plan to how to improve it based off of these specific indicators, starting with just level one, but these specific indicators that are the, I would say, the foundation for us going where we need to go.
Thank you.
Nobody wants to talk about the prayer.
Hello, everybody. I will not say the words pandemic or COVID in my presentation. So that'll hopefully be really awesome because I think that comes up quite often for sure. So if you don't know who I am, Keaton Anderson, high school science teacher here, fishing team advisor, live stream broadcaster, and then, he couldn't make it tonight, but this is all in collaboration with Chris Trozen. He works with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as a wildlife biologist. So, a lot of this data is going to come from him specifically. So, before I get into the nuts and bolts of like what the project is, what I'm going to propose to you, I just kind of want to really briefly review like, what do we do here? Why are these meetings happening? Why do we do this stuff twice a month, for sure? And I brought this, just screenshotted right from the mission statement, right? So there's the mission, then there's the outcomes. And the green stuff is stuff that I highlighted that I think I'm going to cover pretty extensively with the project that I'm going to propose. So, self-discovery, new opportunities, we're going to demonstrate global awareness, diverse opportunities positively impacting our communities. And then we're going to talk about local and global communities too. So really specifically, kind of a local approach. And then we can get into some global stuff too, along with the learning part. So, this is kind of the mission, right? I would like to kind of propose to you guys a really practical approach to bring in a prairie to Somerset. Not just like out over there Somerset, like here on school campus. So we can go there and learn about it. So I don't have to haul 300 people to Star Prairie and go look at their cool prairie like what's on the picture right here. I would love to just walk out there, take five minutes, check it out, and learn some stuff that way. This was taken this past June on the last day of school, the community day. Had a couple lumpy youngsters kind of come to Star Prairie with us. This is Chris right here, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, he's got associate right there. This is the prairie. Obviously, that won't be what it looks like. We don't have lakes around here like what's going on there. But we're talking about native prairie that was here before and then obviously kind of went away. And that's kind of the environmental science stuff that we all grew up learning and still are learning about. Okay, so before the nuts and bolts kind of dollar signs come into play, why would we do this? Why would all the work do as far as that goes? So as it turns out, about 25 to 20% of all science stuff is ecology-related. So, super impactful things that you can do. I mean, we can go out and do those things, which is kind of one of the things that's on here. We can take the abstract out of learning science, which I think is really important. We kind of lose touch of that sometimes. Usually we learn about this environment, that environment, that kind of stuff. And we can't really do anything with it. Like I can't go to Denver and look at the mountains and stuff like that. I can't go to Arizona and look at other environments like that. So, we can bring at least one example here, which would be really cool. And then obviously, there's a ton of learning opportunities with just the amount of prairie plants. We're going to bring animals, insects, we're going to bring flowering plants, seeding plants, and more. We're going to bring all that kind of stuff here. It's a native prairie. So, there's all kinds of stuff that we'll be bringing kind of with us here. And then we can engage with the environment. Like I said, we can actually go outside and do stuff, which I think is kind of the, I can do all the talking in class I want for biology, but until we like go do something, that's the most impactful thing that we can do. If we want to go build bluebird houses and go stick them out there on our prairie, that would be really cool. And then we learn all the ins and outs of why we would do such things. We got a conservation club here, I don't know if you knew that. It's kind of a little hidden gem at the high school. Obviously, they didn't do much last year, but Mr. Wells, give him a shout out. Josh Wells, he runs a conservation club, and they would be doing that, like they would take care of this thing. How cool would that be? Whoops, kind of, all educators are able to engage with this, okay? So this isn't just a high school thing, and I want to make that really clear. And I also want to make clear, this is not just a school thing, right? This is a community thing. People can come, enjoy this resource we have. Because not everybody wants to drive to Star Prairie, right? Even though it's not that far, they don't want to do that. They can just go walk around on campus. Before a football game, go walk out and check out the prairie, stuff like that. So everyone would be invited to come. And if we talk about like the community aspect, we want to lead by example, hopefully as a school district. Want to kind of show the community that we're on board with doing some of these projects. Rehab, prairie rehabilitation, along with other things too. We're going to bring, I think this one's kind of funny, learning opportunities for people not to enroll at Somerset. So, parents, oh my gosh, you can go learn some stuff. Great, bring your kids with you too. I mean, all kinds of opportunities. Students can learn on their own, students that really vibe with environmental sciences, they can just go out and kind of do that stuff on their own. And then we're going to bring native things back. One last thing, I actually screenshot this right kind of from one of the district health sort of things that we got. It's just kind of a monthly newsletter they got out there. So, we are in the era of stress, anxiety, mental health, all that kind of stuff. And being outside is one of the things that you can do best to kind of inhibit some of that stuff. So, reducing anger, anxiety, stress, health benefits, heart, lower heart rate, muscle tension, all that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of opportunities with that too. If we were to have that here on school campus, right? The fourth mod of the high school flex mod schedule, wouldn't it be great? If we could just go walk out, look at some birds, come back, right? Mindfulness, like true mindfulness. Okay, here's where the nuts and bolts come in. And this is where probably some discussion is going to come in. And I'm totally fine just like on the fly answering questions. We got 17 acres of this, this farmed land. Seventeen, last, or excuse me, I think this year, thanks to Dave Gerbering for this number. $100 per acre, we leased that out. $100 per acre. So, 100 times 17, that's about three and a half good microscopes. Did the math. So it's not a whole lot. And then this land is four, which is where the majority of the discussion on anticipating is coming in. And I would love to talk about is, this is kind of future expansion, like possibilities. Like what if there is a baseball field that's going to come, that kind of stuff? Yes?
Keaton is the $100 per, is that per year?
Per acre, yeah, per year. Well, the rate can change.
$1,700 per year.
That's why we leased it out to the farmer.
Yeah, so the rate can change year to year and stuff like that. But at least like this year, this was the number.
That's a tilibole.
So, expansion of facilities is going to be an issue, and I'll for sure bring that up. But, how much is this going to cost? What are we going to do? Oh my gosh, certain species are $200 an ounce. That is about the weight of a hummingbird. An ounce, $200, oh my gosh, what are we going to do? Well, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service with Chris and all of his members and volunteers that go pick seed out there at the seed farm, they're going to do it all for free. They're going to give us all the seed for nothing. And then they're going to come, teach us about our own prairie, which would be really interesting and cool. So that's kind of part of the community aspect, bringing them in and stuff like that. I mean, how often, kids could put that on their resume as soon as they leave the high school. I worked with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, did stuff on our own campus. Really cool, really cool stuff. Okay, and I believe this is my last slide. So here's kind of the ultimate goal, and where discussion will for sure take place. The one really big caveat to this project is that it's got to be permanent. Permanent. No temporary prairies, permanent. So we would like to set aside as much prairie land as possible permanently, and that's got to happen, right? No matter where it happens, that's got to happen. Because Chris told me about a couple examples, unfortunately, it's like a couple, it's not just one, where they build this really awesome prairie, do all the work. It becomes a brilliant prairie, like in three or four years, it gets really overgrown and looks like a prairie at that point, and then just plowed it right under, did something else. I mean, that's, that's not right, that's not what we want to do. So, and some more X's and O's kind of stuff. We, the Somerset School District, staff and students in partnership with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, possibly a Somerset fire rescue. They haven't gotten back to me because I emailed them very late. So Travis will get back to me, I'm sure. But we're going to have to burn the prairie too, which would be really fun. So like once every four years, so every kid that comes into Somerset, they'll get to watch a prairie fire, a prescribed burn, which would be really cool. Which has benefits ecologically to the prairie system. So that would be very interesting for sure. So, those are the things. And we don't need to hire out, we don't even have to have groundskeeper or staff here do anything, right? Other than maybe mow around the prairie, wherever it is. If there's walking trails, we'll figure it out. If there's benches, we'll figure it out, right? We're not there yet, we're just to the initial plan of this thing. So, like I said, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and us, high school, middle school, elementary school, everybody can help out and just kind of maintain the prairie. Identify invasive species, plant some plugs once in a while, whatever. And I'm not sure how, is this open for like discussion at this point, or not really sure? Sorry.
I love this.
Okay.
I absolutely love this. I, I'm so impressed, I love it. I don't know what else I can possibly say.
Yeah.
I know it costs money, but you know. I mean, it's.
It'll only cost the amount that we won't get from leasing it.
And the other thing that I'm concerned about is, Mark, have you looked at this? And what amount of land can we permanently dedicate to this?
That's a really good question. And that's something that, you know, in different venues, we've heard about different venues, but different conversations we had, talked about master plan. And it really has to happen. You know, I don't see anything happening up there for years and that. But, you know, to say permanent, you know, that's a lot.
It's a tough word, that's a tough word.
And just this whole concept of what you're talking about here, I'd urge you to contact the Prairie Wetland Science Program in Fergus Falls. This program started in Fergus Falls 21, 22 years ago. We entered into an agreement with the Fish and Wildlife and DNR. And there's a whole interpretive center now. I mean, there was state funding given to us, and they have a magnet school up there right now, which every eighth grader for a certain amount of time spends time outside every day on the prairie. And there's so many possibilities with this, it's unbelievable. But if you do the backtracking, you'll find out that, you know, one great science teacher there that eventually went to work for the Fish and Wildlife and developed this program. So, I'd urge you to.
Sure.
You know, it's been there for 20 some years and it's still going strong. And it's, there's, again, my vision would be to walk that, walk that path. But again, to answer your question, we'd have to do some master planning and see just what portion, you know, because we've got, I don't know, 80 acres up there, but there's what, 20 some tilibole that we're using now.
And many years before you started here, Keaton, we did a huge project with our seventh and eighth graders building a fitness trail, and it's not there anymore. It was a ton of work that we did with them. It was open to the community and the one school.
I love this idea though too.
I do too, but.
Well, I cannot figure out the run back.
Yeah. Were you in seventh grade?
I think I was in sixth grade.
And the section of land, like I say, hopefully, like you could just start some conversations initially, but this is just kind of the proposal, like is a huge cool idea. I would love to pursue it, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service would love to as well. Like I say, they're going to, they're going to do all the stuff for us.
But it's a huge investment for them, so I certainly understand why they want to make sure it's permanent.
Yes, for sure. They actually have some paperwork, like assigned to it. I think technically, the paperwork doesn't say permanent on it, but it'll say 10 years or something like that. But we would like it to be.
What happened to the other two places that?
I think parking lots.
No, I mean, what did something, did anything happen with the Fish and Wildlife Service? Like a repercussion?
Like a legal transaction, or like after like the contract violation or something? No, I have no point. That's, that would be a question I can send out to Chris.
They probably won't give you a permit to build the building.
And like I said, I don't know the whole story, but between those examples, but the sad part is that they totally annihilated a cool thing like this. That's the bad part.
So can you explain, I might have misunderstood, the 17 acres of farmland, $100 per acre?
About.
Is that $1,700 per year that we usually take in, but because we're going to use it, it's, it's not income for the school district?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, what's happened over the last couple of years with the construction and everything, you know, we've had to just tell them, you know, you don't want to blow us anything because we've torn up, last year we tore up a bunch of scraps. This year, we're going to tear them up again. You already paid us for this year, so we'll probably tell them, you know, next year, you'll, you know, if we enter into a agreement, we won't charge them. It's, it's something.
So, do we need, we've already talked about wanting a master plan for the place anywhere, for the district anywhere, right?
Well, we've just discussed it lightly, we haven't engaged in any, you know, I mean, that's a formal process and, you know, we'd have to pay for it. But they would look at the demographics, they'd look at, you know, space usage right now and do some assumptions that if we gain 300 kids over the next five years, where are we going to put them? And then we'd have to, okay, we're going to expand a couple of buildings, or we're going to build a new building. And those are things that we, that's what master planning is. And if we did build a new plant, building, where would we put it on the property? You know, so it's something that should happen because you know you're going to be faced with something here in five to 10 years if anything holds true.
Well, I just want to make really clear too, like this, the goal is not to just, oh my gosh, giant prairie, everything's prairie, like, that's not the goal. We just want a good-sized plot to learn from.
Is there a way, so, and I don't know what it is, but can you, can we get like a map of the whole site that says maybe from them, you work in with them, sorry to put more into play, but these are the spots where we could possibly do something? And then we kind of compare it to, if we do do it, some master plan with wool?
Yeah, and they've got some little wetlands on it too, and that's a big.
Well, I walked, Chris and I walked this, I think towards the end of last school year or into the summertime. We walked this and assessed it a little bit, and this part, I don't know if you guys, and this is not accurate, by the way, I don't know what year, who will. this part, I don't know if you guys, and this is not accurate, by the way, I don't know what year, who it was on, but like, this is a super terrain-y part, and anybody that runs Cars Country will know that, oh my gosh, there's a giant hill right here. So, maybe the least accessible, like, land, even though anything can be done with construction, but, it's just an idea, something like that.
When do you wanna start this, and then also, is there, is there opportunities for learning every season of the year?
Yes.
Even in wintertime?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, for sure, we can go out there anytime, and, like I say, the sky's the limit for learning stuff, I mean, it would be really cool to just interact with something, you know, we can go here, which is something our school has good, like thumbs up as well, we got a whole bunch of forests here, which is something we can go out and walk through and learn and stuff like that too. But, one thing that's like traditional, native around here is prairie land, and we don't have that, so, with all of this, you know, land, we could do something with it, it's kind of the big idea.
And when would you wanna start this project?
Um, I think, cause we started talking about this last, last last year, and then, and then COVID happened, oops, I said COVID. And COVID happened, and then I just kind of paused everything, right? So, I didn't even bring it up, so, oh, that's, that's.
I'd urge you to even take a trip up to, cause what, what you wanna do here, there's a model for it, and and the US Fish and Wildlife, I think if you talk to them, they'll point you in that direction.
Sure, awesome, well, thank you.
But, what do you need, what, what's the next step here? I mean, if you were counting on starting this, this fall, you needed, I don't know that we're prepared to give you an answer.
No, initially, when we started talking about this last year, it was to kind of propose an area, and then involve students in the community in planning what this is gonna look like, are there gonna be trails? Kind of all through winter, and then the springtime was kind of the best time to plant. So that would be, that would be the timeline, it would be like, spring, spring plant.
So you would need a decision by the board by March, April?
We could, if we are allowed to like start planting it, then that would be fine, yeah. But otherwise, I don't know, I mean, like, December or January would give us enough time, a couple months, three months, to maybe plan where it would go and stuff like that.
Is the lease a calendar here?
So, what do I suggest is next time, fell from the Fish and Wildlife, you get together when we meet, and then we take a look at what that land looks like up there, there may be some corner, but we chisel out right away. Even without the master planning, probably drag Vaughn in and say, what's the least likely area that we would probably, you know, tear up again, you know, in the future for facilities, and just get a rough idea without going, without initiating the, you know, the long range planning, but I do think that is something we need to.
And do you know what the minimum amount of acreage you'd necessarily?
Um, I don't think there is one, I know we would, just because there is so much there, it would be nice, I don't know, to get around, maybe like five acres, like, that would be a good sizable plot, but five acres is enough for a building, you know? So that is a commitment, for sure.
That's less than Parnell Prairie, have you been to Parnell Prairie? I'll talk to you later.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Abby, you've got the seclusion and restraint report.
Do you wanna hold up here, Abby? Do you guys all have it linked, I don't, I don't know if you have, or whatever, but. Sharpus Reed, just here with your annual seclusion restraint report that by law we have to give to the school board. It talks about seclusion, and you have to separate, like I did last year, seclusion restrained, and if it happened, if a student experienced both in one incident. Couple things just to give you an update, if a student who does not have an IEP or is not supported through special education, has to have a seclusion or restraint, by law, we have to have a meeting with the parents immediately, and discuss the situation that took place, and have any proactive planning going forward. If a student is supported by an IEP, after the second time a seclusion or restraint is done, then we have to pull the IEP team together and talk about what's going on, and problem solve, and come up with a behavior plan that will better support the student. I think, as you can see in the numbers, they're much lower. Yep, we've, we've transitioned some students around, but I do truly believe the partnership that our teachers are doing with our parents are really making the big difference. Last year, I spent many meetings with parents and case managers and IEP teams, talking about specific students, and together, planning on how to support the student better, and I think it really is starting to show. And I think the other difference, Laurie asked me, what's, what's changing, right? And I think the things that are happening in the district all around with staff, and support staff too, they're learning tools with our restorative practices and our mindfulness, that they're really starting to implement with students, and I just am starting now to see those trickle effects with certain students supported by an IEP. They're much, more able to self-regulate, kind of identify what's going on with them, using their own tools, and staff and teachers are able to kind of identify when a student might need some extra tools, and they're just willing to do it now. I think it's really been a big shift in our district with all the work, so, that's why I, that's what I would really contribute to, the less numbers that we have now. So I'm pretty excited, love it, good for our students.
It's a huge decrease.
Thank you. Any questions? Great.
Dave, you wanna check both meal prices?
Yeah, so meal prices are good news. Again, this year is we are able to charge nothing for regular breakfast and lunch for the year. This is a, again, part of the program that we took advantage of last year, related to the COVID stimulus funds, and, doing it again this year, the prices for, if you scroll down just a little bit, Asia, like second entrees or à la carte items, those remain the same. And if you remember, prior to all this, we had asked USDA, DPI, if we can actually reduce prices, because we are trying to make it more accessible, and also to find ways to spend down that fund balance for the food service fund, so. All in all, this is good news for families. The reimbursement rate is such that we anticipate we'll be building up our fund balance again. We did submit a plan to DPI for ways to spend that down, because we're required to spend it down to a certain level. And so when we get these higher reimbursements, and meals are free, and participation is going up hopefully, that's making it so the fund balance is growing, and we we have to become more creative with the ways that we can spend that down. But, all of that being said, we usually bring the meal prices to you as a school board, for approval, we'll do that at the business session, and I wanted to give you the good news again, this year will be free for regular meals. If you have any concerns or comments.
Just free for our families.
Absolutely.
And you're the next item too.
Yeah, so this one. Did you put this one on here, Laurie, I'm not sure what.
Well, typically, in a regular year, in the summertime, we have a conversation about where our health and dental insurance premiums come in, and I know you talked about that with us. I'm thinking it was back in May or June, and we weren't really sure yet where everything was gonna fall out, and what the plan is and the budget for steps and lanes.
Sure, so, salary and benefits, we did talk in June for the preliminary budget. That budget, which was close to balance at that time, did include steps and lanes across the board for everybody. We have talked previously, we haven't set anything in stone, but we've said, well, every few years, we would also add a percentage to the, all the schedules as well. That isn't included, just regular steps and lanes were included in the preliminary budget. And an estimate of that, to add about one percent to all schedules, is about a hundred thousand dollars total compensation, so payroll taxes and such as well. That being said, we know a little bit more than we knew in June, you know, the state budget is, as of right now. And, our approach remains the same, where we will be using all of our ESTR funds, and we expect to have a balanced budget for this year. That being said, we don't know the final ESTR two amount and the ESTR three amount yet, that are calculated based on the hours in person reporting. We did just submit that last week to DPI, so hopefully we'll get their calculations for those final dollar amounts in the near future. So, waiting for that additional revenue calculation, which is significant for us. And then the people count, what does Third Friday in September look like? That will inform our revenue limit, and then we can say, we have a really good idea what this year is, and based on the state budget, here's the kind of discussion we're gonna have to have for next year as well. So, for salary and benefits, currently in the budget, regular steps and lanes, we can talk about adding percentages to the salary schedules this year, or in the future. Benefits, health insurance, we've had a lot of conversation with Jay Counter and Health Partners. Hey, Mark, you didn't touch on this.
No, I didn't.
So, we went through all of the scenarios, they went to RFP, if you remember, Linda came in and talked about the result. We did investigate changing the size of the deductibles, dealing with the HRA contributions from the district versus premium changes. And at the end of the day, it wasn't, when we look at what we would expect as a utilization for HRA, we wouldn't expect it to be such a savings that it would make using that tool now worth it. And a big concern that I had was, when you put more of this onto the HRA side, which is district funded as needed, then the risk exposure to the district goes up. And this last year, in 2021, we had our lowest utilization ever, by far. And, our concern is, you know, was that people putting off a lot of things because of COVID, and now this year, we're at least getting back up to average, if not, you know, higher, because it was put on before it, so. We didn't feel like this was a good year to say, let's leverage our HRA, when we're not certain how it's gonna go. All of that being said, we have been digging in a lot more into, is it possible for Somerset, a district our size, to go self-funding? You know, you get to about twice our size, and it's much more common. Jay Counter feels like there are some options and some good approaches that we can consider. We're gonna have very serious conversations about that, starting much earlier in the process. Because we, we're taking that seriously, we'd really like to do that if it's possible for us, so. That's the outlook for going forward and next year and beyond. Whether or not we can do that next year, remains to be seen, and more to be discussed and heard. So all that being said, did I?
So, what were the rate increases?
Oh, it remains where it was when Linda brought it to you, it's twenty-two percent health, nine percent dental.
And that's factored into the year.
Yeah, that's also factored into the June preliminary.
Don't you normally, like, negotiate kind of a two-year deal?
Yeah, we do often, and this year they would not.
So, that's why you could take advantage, you have to look at self-insured.
And, you know, hypothetically, there's ways to, you know, save costs. You know, you have much more control, if you're self-funded, you can.
Oh, yeah, no.
Address pharmaceutical side, whereas now we can't. So, yeah, I mean, these increases, it's, it's not good, the district is not good for employees and families, you know, to the best of our ability, we wanna keep those costs low, right? And so if that's the way we can do that, you know, we're gonna try really hard to see if it's possible for us.
Being on the CISA Board of Control, a couple of months ago, we approved another school district going in with the CISA Health Insurance Consortium. And, I don't know if that is a good possibility for us or not.
We will be investigating that as, investigating that as an option again, we did look at that historically, and there was when you get a consortium of districts, there's always a concern about, you know, the free rider issue, where the districts that maybe wanna join the most are the ones that have the highest costs.
Well, they won't take them.
So, again, absolutely, absolutely, that, that will be part of the discussion. The concept truly though, that Linda and Jay Counter are pushing is, you, as the employer, on your own, you're self-funded, and you can do it. And as addition, we're gonna be saying, show us how.
Yeah.
Yeah, prove it.
Does anybody else have any?
How do we approve the, the step for this year?
I don't think we need to.
That, that was, that's built in.
It's already done?
Unless you say, don't do it, yeah.
So we, I don't have, we don't have to tell you as a board to give everybody a step starting now, or they've already, you've already given it to them?
No, it doesn't start until September.
It's not, it hasn't happened yet, this is built in the budget, so once you approve the budget, in October, it's official, like, this is the budget plan. However, if you were to say, like we did last year, we wanna hold off, right? That would be built in that way, and that would be approved in that manner. Or if you were to say, add a percentage to the salary schedules, then I would build that in, and that would be that.
So, October is when it's.
And, and of course, so like next year, second year of the state budget, we will know much more in advance, and by the end of the school year, we could be saying, this is the compensation plan for next year, and approve it early, so that everybody gets paid, and there's no retro pay. But, that being said, whatever it ends up being, people will get paid whatever is approved at the end of the day.
But that's gonna be October?
We adopt our original budget in October.
So, I think Bruce's question was, will the step in lane be effective as of the September payroll?
No.
But it would be in October, as current, as currently approved in our preliminary budget, we had the, everybody had another step in lane adjustment, right?
Yeah, and at any point in time, at any point in time, you can say, as a board, we want, you know, just steps and lanes, or we want a percentage, or we wanna hold it, and then we process that and proceed.
Well, we could do that now, right?
At any point in time. I can tell you right now, regardless, it would be difficult to get that on the payroll for September, just what's going on, and all the different tasks that are going on at this point in time. But, generally speaking, it doesn't have to be built into the budget, and it's, happens after the budget, when the budget is approved, it happens that way, when we are having discussions saying, you don't know what the revenue is yet. Anything is still up for discussion. That's why it goes through that timeline, but at any point, having discussed what we discussed before, you can say, yeah, this is the plan we're going forward with this, process as soon as possible.
I would just say we pay the people as soon as possible. If we just approve a step in lane, instead of waiting, you know, we always wait, and we always seem to push, and it always seems to push, it's. I'm just saying, I, I think we give everybody their step in lane adjustment right now. And if later we find we wanna do another one percent, then we can make that retro pay. But, I'd just like to get it out in front of everybody that, hey, we're taken care of, that's a done issue, we're not talking about that in February or March.
But I think a lot of times, so last year was exceptional because of COVID, obviously.
Yeah, but it's been, it hasn't been the exception, it's been the same every single year that I've been on.
Last year was exceptional, and otherwise, it's the first year of the state biennial. So, that weighs heavily in our, on our timeline. If that's a budget that's approved early on at the state level, then we know what we have much earlier. But if it's a late one, then we don't, and so usually the second year of the biennial is much quicker. And, there have been years where it's approved in the spring, or the following year. So it's not like just every year, a lot of times it's every other year, cause the budget at the state level isn't until late. Right, so it, it really, we're having these discussions in this manner, in this timeline, because a lot of our revenues are determined by what happens on that time.
We just don't know yet for two years.
So, is that, does anybody wanna push it through now, or do we wanna wait till October?
It was, it was not unusual to have it approved in October and have retroactive, or it's two, three payrolls. Especially when it's a budget year. At the state level.
I, yeah, I'm just thinking of administratively, what's the best approach for, for you guys? So, I think waiting until October is the best.
In the business office, we are at a point where if you're saying steps. if you're saying, steps, we like what we saw in the preliminary budget, let's proceed, then we can manage that. If you're saying, well, let's see if we're worried about the revenues or let's see if there's maybe something additional after the Third Friday account where we might have the ability to, you know, increase percentages. Look, if there's things that you want to wait on to have that information and make a different call, then let's wait. But if you're saying, we like the June preliminary and we know enough, then we can process that, you know, as soon as possible. Which isn't necessarily, you know, next payroll, there's a lot of, this is a very busy time of year.
Yeah.
Just wait till October.
It's retroactive, right?
Right.
So I guess I'm just saying, in this case, whatever's easiest for you guys that have to actually make the changes in the system, I think would be the best. I don't know.
Let's wait till October then, I guess. It sounds like that's the easiest.
But it even sounds like you're saying ASAP is okay? Or would you think we should wait till October just because of your workload right now?
Well, I'll give you an example. You know, we have new staff coming onsite next week and so there will be a lot of interaction with, you know, personal forums and signing up and thing within, you know, Rod's office and Jody's office. There's these periodic periods of being very busy, especially for like Rod, who runs the payrolls, so the logistical side of this. And then you add in this time of year when it's new staff, benefit open enrollment, all these extra things where it's a lot of forms and it's a lot of, it's a lot of time spent on extra things that aren't normally part of the day. So is it a difficult time to do it right now? With that being said, it's, you know, if the board has a strong preference, then that's what we'll do.
That's important, I would recommend we wait till October. That's an ongoing thing that I'm always concerned about. I'd like, I'd like to know we got the money in the bank.
It's fine. Say, I'd rather wait.
Well, he's trying to be flexible, I appreciate it.
Did anybody else have any questions for Dave?
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, and thank you for coming in a little bit early, that was really nice.
Well, there's a time delay, you know.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
I usually try to do that, sometimes the one before me is quick.
Thank you. Annual reports, oh no, I'm sorry, Trish.
Yep.
Evaluation of the reading curriculum.
Yes, so I attached my initial report. Really interesting, because when that policy came up, if you remember, I had surveyed my peers and they said, what? You know, don't tell our boards. But I've been on the phone since then. What? Oh, yeah, you've been on the phone? Well, so far, nothing's out there. So I contacted CISA and I said, is there a template, is there expectations? What, what does this look like? And they had nothing. And they said, we don't think anyone does that. But today, we met with CISA person as well and to talk about our Title I programs, our Title I, Title II, Title IV budgets. And she assured me that on the first meeting of the reading specialist, this was going to come to the table so they can better understand state statute and what it really means because Wisconsin has historically, traditionally, looking at state data, reading issues or reading deficit. So she was actually here today, so I had her go through it with me to see if I covered most of the bases. I'm using this time to mostly give you some background information as this is the first time we've submitted this. From now on, Mindy Shook, our brand new reading specialist, will be doing the evaluation, working with teachers pre-K through 12. So what I wanted to do was just give you a little bit of background, I'm not going to go through it. You have it attached on some of the definitions and terminology, because that's changed a wee bit. Our resources really are encapsulating all of the stuff that we use, might even be something like the elementary journeys currently. That is not our curriculum, curriculum doesn't entail more than that. It's our navigation through that curriculum, adding our formative assessments, our pacing guides and so on. If you look down, it's kind of the perfect storm right now. They had brand new Wisconsin reading standards, ELA standards released last year. I put the key shifts in here for you. That's part of the work for three years, last year was year one, in identifying what is the same, what is different? How do we manage our resources and update our curriculum to reflect and make sure our kids are getting those standards of the level of rigor in which they're written? I did attach the appendix, it is fascinating to read. You'll see a lot of the pieces related in that appendix will also be showing up in the math standards that are being released this year. And that really does work around making sure that our students are recognizing the identities and valuing the identities of themselves, seeing themselves in literature, seeing themselves in the world, seeing themselves as a contributor to, to all that is around us. And looking at our own curriculum, our six through 12 teachers started a two-year process of looking at what they're doing, looking at data and making some determinations. We brought on StudySync last year. It has been challenging and enjoyable, I put in here. There's a lot, a lot of choices that we match up to what our Wisconsin academic standards are and so on. It's considered a high-quality, highly-aligned resource. It doesn't happen overnight, with COVID, we had a lot of stuff going on. So we have multiple, we've done multiple trainings and our high school, as you know, is 50% brand new again this year. So we'll start over, making sure we have fidelity to the program, aligning to the new standards as we understand them. We had our first meeting of the elementary up through grade five ELA committee. We have classroom representation, we have special ed representation, Title I. Mindy joined us, Pam and Sarah, to start really looking at instructional rubrics, looking at what is best practice, looking at all sorts of materials that are being pushed out by multiple sources, primarily DPI, saying, here's what a reader looks like, here's the standards, here's what we expect, here's the key shifts and how you're going to meet them. Instructional rubrics are part of that as well. After we get through all of those things, then we will start to build our own vision of what is literacy, what is ELA as we move forward into, into this next year. We hope to end with a pilot of a high-quality resource in the spring. We don't jump right to resources, we make sure we're grounded in research and grounded in the latest and the greatest because we all went to school at different times, we all have different backgrounds and we have to come together as a team with a common vision. So you'll be hearing more about that as we go through the year and as we do our investigations. We have monthly meetings planned, sometimes more than that in order to make sure that we're giving it the time it needs before we, we decide which direction that we are going. The folks on the committee are very passionate about literacy. It's a very big group and they're all very excited to be part of it. So stay tuned for more reports on that. Did you have any questions when you read the report?
I was wondering, because I saw that you're looking at new curriculum for the elementary and I know the years go by quickly and things are longer ago than I thought. When did we just adopt elementary curriculum? How long ago was that?
So we're on last year, so this is year six.
This is year six, okay.
And so our subscription will run out, our online, so it's either renewing it or moving to something else. And we know that this resource has not been deemed highly, high-quality by many outside evaluations. And we have done things to make sure that we have filled holes and gaps, but that is not the kind of thing that we want to renew and keep on campus.
Right, and, but at the time, I'm sure. And then, any of us, maybe all of us in this room except Keaton, got the email about letters and-
Science of reading.
The science of reading, so.
So we're looking into all of that. I mean, we're wide open, eyes wide open to what's out there. I did also do some investigation, Pam and I, again with CISA, because a lot of this is coming through state legislature, looking into SLEZIA and how are we servicing, managing, identifying and making sure our teachers are qualified and have what they need. So we're looking at all of that, I did hear some very interesting background information on both of those programs. Letters is owned by Lexia now too. We use Lexia, we use Hegarty's, we use Sande, those are all part of that big package that we're talking about. If you look at the science of reading, they are promoted, they are stamped with high quality. So we do many of those wonderful things that are in there. We'll make sure we bring that to the table and do some investigation.
Okay, great, thank you. Did anybody else have anything? Okay, then we are on to the annual reports and policy review. The first items under letter A, these are all policies that are required by state statute that we have an annual review of. I asked Ryan Bing and Dr. Ramsey, our medical advisor, to take a look at them and see if they had any changes that they were interested in. And they said that everything is good as is. I did contact our NEOLA person regarding policy 5310. He is looking into some of that language. At this point in time, all I can tell you is that this policy is copyrighted from 2006 and-
I don't understand it myself.
Right, and I'm just trying to get to the policy right now.
Yep, I asked Ryan, Ryan, sorry. Ryan Bing was going to be here to get a family thing, he had, it came out that he wasn't able to. So he did send me some information regarding that specific sentence, if you don't mind sharing.
Sure, go ahead.
Can I just read it?
Yep.
Says, the policy states that we as workers under the healthcare office may take part in care that requires incision, insertion or injection. Examples of this, that we see in the healthcare office include removal of ticks and splinters or other foreign matter that does not require emergency action to be taken, otoscope exams for any non-emergent hearing, inner ear inspection or examination. As for injection, this relates to our ability to provide medications that involve injections such as insulin and other medications as prescribed by physician, orders with medical documentation. Everything we do is under our scope of practice. It allows us to bring in, or it also allows us to bring in like bridging brighter smiles and the flu clinics, all of course, have to have parent permission and documentation as well.
Right.
So I don't know if that helps, but.
Yeah, it's just, I think, I think we probably asked the same question before and probably will again because the language is a little awkward and you're going, what are you talking about, private body parts?
Yeah, right.
Well, ticks, yeah, that makes sense.
Sure, but it is a language thing.
And even that little thing with the flashlight, they looked in your ear to see if you have an ear infection, that would be considered invasive. So, and certainly EpiPem's and Enzilab.
Yeah, and anything for seizure medication, you know.
I wonder if we could possibly add some language, including like, including but not limited to removal of ticks or-
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to do that, just with the overall sensitivity of vaccinations and everything like that, and that's how I think some of this is coming from, which I think that's a good idea. So we can look at, we can look at how we can expand that.
Contacted Chris and he's looking into it.
Yeah, I think we have a meeting with him Wednesday, next week.
So anyway, those were for review only, so they will not be coming back next meeting. There's no approval or anything that we need to do with them. And if we come up with something that we want to change with 5310 or revision, we can bring it back again.
I'm thinking that-
Do we have to bring it at a work session or can we just plan to bring it back?
I think we need to plan to bring it back.
Well, I don't know if we'll have the necessary information to make a language change on it by August, what is it, the 23rd that we're meeting?
We can try.
Well, and I don't think it even necessarily done, but just if we know that we're going to bring that one back.
Put it on a September work session.
Yeah, it might have to be in the work session though.
Yep, that's fine, I just want to make it known because I know there is concern over that one. We are going to bring it back.
And then the three that are, have first reading. The confidentiality one, 8350, it's referenced in policy 5335. All of the other policies that are referenced in it, our current policies that the Somerset School District have in place. Our NEOLA representative for, remains having this policy and there are no choices to it. Did anybody have any questions about 8350 confidentiality? All right, then 8420.01, epidemics and pandemics. It's referenced in policy 8450.01. Ryan and Mark went through it and the choices indicated represent their input and sent the sentence in paragraph one referencing policy 8405 can be deleted. And 8450.01, the changes there reflect the discussion that we had at the July 26th meeting. Did anybody have any questions about that one?
I do. So I know that people are very concerned about the language, about seeing an increase in cases and having that quantified in some way. I don't know how that's, how we would do that, but I think tomorrow night's meeting with parents will be one way that we can get information on what, you know, what's our threshold for, what's considered a rise in cases. Of course, I don't know that there's an answer for that, but it's something we need to think about. I know that's a huge concern from parents in the community, that that's kind of open-ended and up for interpretation. And then, I'm trying to find the policy. Is there one specific part of the first sentence? I'm trying to get there.
In the blue part.
I had it pulled up. During times of elevated communicable disease.
Yes.
Now spread?
Yeah.
That, of course, it's just like.
Can't work higher today for two weeks. Substantial or something now, or moderate or something like two weeks. Technically, we're elevated from some point.
So during times of elevated communicable disease, so I know that that's a concern. You know, how we're going to define that elevated elevation in cases? And then I had asked, and I'm still curious, if a valid medical reason for not, let's say masks go, are required for some reason, but is a valid medical reason being vaccinated included in an option for perhaps a teacher to say, well, my medical reason for not wearing a mask is I'm vaccinated? I'm just curious about that because I've heard feedback from teachers that say they were specifically vaccinated so they wouldn't have to wear a mask. So that's another concern. Then also, on the first page in the last. See, I didn't highlight it, now I'm looking for it. There was, there was a place in here that said, during ti, okay, page two, right before the bold header of use of masks slash face covering is a paragraph, during times of elevated communicable disease, again, there's that up for interpretation language, community spread as determined by the board in consultation with health professionals. I thought we were taking us out of the equation and that that would be considered determined by administration, the district administrator.
This has to do with buses, we talked about this last, at the July 26th meeting.
That is specifically buses?
Yes. And we talked about how it's a federal mandate.
But where does it say that has to do with a bus?
It's right there, the sentence continues, all students are required to wear masks while being transported on district school buses.
Okay, sorry.
And that, and Mark talked about that as well.
Yep, I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's all right.
Okay.
You guys repeat that, I'm having a really hard time hearing that. And I, I have the same question. So where we're saying that the board has approved the wearing of face masks covering, we authorize the district administrator. So I think that's exactly what wrapped in with that theme, that isn't this in the hands of the district administrator and nothing that the board any longer has authority over?
Yeah, that was my mistake, Cherie, there is a specific, it does specifically talk about being transported on school buses, which is a federal mandate, so that's my mistake.
And it doesn't say that the board approves it either.
But this is going to come back.
District administrator, a concurrence of the building principals to immediately implement the wearing of face masks. So to me, that resets the board is still in- So, to me, that reads that the board is still in control of that decision?
No.
I don't know where she's reading that.
She was up in the blue paragraph.
Board authorizes, I mean, what she's saying.
The board authorizes the district administrator to, in concurrence with the building principals, to make decisions.
Did you hear that, Cherie?
I, you know, I can't, I'm sorry, it's recorded.
It's okay. Laurie said, if you're reading that, that part, that sentence that we added after the comma, the board authorizes the district administrator. Was that what you were asking about? In concurrence with the principals. So, we're.
Giving direction to the board administrator, or the district administrator.
We're giving him that power. So, can we agree that there's nowhere in this policy that this decision can be made by the board?
If we change the policy again.
Okay, so, but the way it is, the way that we're gonna vote on it next week, or two weeks from now, there is no, there is no language within this policy that gives the power back to the board to make the decision to put masks, to make masks mandatory. I'm not seeing it and I just wanna just have.
Well, I would hesitate to say that because
You can always do that.
The board always has the final authority.
But we would have to change the policy first, right?
If we were in disagreement with Laurie.
I just, I just want to be really clear, because I know this is a concern and I wanna.
Because we were technically going against the policy around the border. Because we had to change the policy, so I'm guessing that the way that the board wouldn't have to change the policy to make the vote. Guessing we would change it, but. I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying.
I just don't want to, I don't want to say, I never want to say never.
Based on how this policy is, if we would, the board wouldn't make the, wouldn't make the vote based on this policy, but we would have to. Go outside this policy to make a change right now. Basically have to.
And we can't tie the hands with any future boards. I mean, that's just not possible. So, this policy says district administrator and building principals, you're gonna decide that, that part of it. Are there other policies that could possibly come into play, probably, you know? Whether it's the pandemic and, you know, some of these other standard policies, but I'm, we know what the intent was, it's on record what the intent was, to put this in writing and that plays into a lot of. When you're, when somebody's looking at, well, why did you pass this policy like this? They could go back and watch the film. Did it, we're not trying to do anything underhanded. There's nothing, you know, lowballing anybody, not sneaking anything through. It's just read the language. And the board authorizes the district administrator in concurrence with the building principals to immediately implement the wearing of face masks as optional. I can't predict what happens in the future, but.
What if we, what if.
I voted no.
What if, what if the administrators, there's this rise in cases which needs to be quantified because we don't know what that really means. It's subjective.
Yep. You need some flexibility in there too.
What if, what if the administrators, there's a rise in cases in some people's eyes and the administrators don't make masks mandatory? And members of the board disagree with their decision and want to make masks mandatory? Are we gonna, you know, I'm trying to say, are we 100% giving them the power to make that decision and we are not gonna stay, stand in their way?
No, I could do what you guys did and just keep bringing it up at a meeting. I could ask for it to be put on a, on, in an agenda and the board would have to take it up. This policy, which, you know, because we just went through all that.
Okay, but that's, that's fine. If you want to bring it forward as a discussion on a policy, I get that, but.
There's no other way to do it.
Right, but, but what I'm seeing is. So, I want to be clear that the intent is that we are not going to step in because we feel that there is a rise in cases and they aren't doing their due diligence or something.
Mark, do you want to address that?
Well, my question is, a rise in cases to you might be two people. And to other people, it might be.
Some things we learned from last, some things we learned from last year, you know, the districts around us that had real tight rubrics or metrics or what have you, we're changing them every week because nobody knew what direction this was going. So, my intent, just give you a little thing here, you know, we got four, four groups that we're going to be tightly in contact with. You know, besides, you know, parents, staff, you know, the DHS and St. Wright County and all that. And then also the, you know, the Middle Border Conference too. I mean, these are all pieces that we're gonna be looking at cases. You know, you look at last year, you know, we were one of the few that were able to keep open. So, it's different in every district. So, to say, oh, it's five cases here, or three here, what have you. And that's what tomorrow is. The survey that went out to staff that I was just able to send out to today. We're trying to find comfort levels and how people feel about the same as tomorrow that we're gonna be talking about, giving them some factual information that we know of right now. How do you feel about, you know, our protocols going into this next year? What worked last year, what didn't, and what do you want to see for this next year? We'll take that information, plus a staff survey. And administratively, we're gonna sit down with, you know, all that information, what's the recommendations? What's our mandates? You know, we know we have transportation that's federal, that's, you know, I mean, we were on that from day one where other districts were wavering on it, you know? So, there's, there's all these pieces that we'll be working with weekly, if not daily, saying where are we at? And then, you know, plus our infection rates, you know, what do we have right now? We haven't had anything all summer. You know, so, knock on wood, but again, every district's gonna be a little different. So, you know, the main goal is keeping students and staff safe. That's just it.
And keeping our schools open.
Yeah, and if we have breakouts where we need to mask up, you know what? We're gonna do it if that's gonna be our, you know, the only piece we have left to do, so.
The people not included in the, in the groups he just talked about were board members. So, they're gonna work with these groups.
And we'll put that together, we'll bring it to the board.
I'm just trying to be transparent so that people can hear it. And in, in answer to your, you know, comment that it was brought forward a few times. Yeah, because there were significant issues. There were real-time impact in schools. There was, you know, 85% of staff that, that wanted us to take a closer look at masks optional and overwhelming amount of parents. So, there was significant developments to support bringing the policy back.
So.
In my opinion.
And if this does come to, I mean, I'm not going to say that in the future, something's not going to happen, Roxanne, but as always, it will be a board decision, not an individual decision. And so, it's a board vote. And I'm not gonna say never, because I don't know the future. You know, it sounds like you want to guarantee and I just can't.
I don't want to guarantee, I just want it understood that we truly do trust administrators to make the best decisions for the schools when it comes to this subject. And I'm hoping that we stick with that as much as we possibly can. That's probably where I'm, if that, I think that's maybe a better way to put it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, and we're all treading a new ground with this. So, I mean, it's gonna be a give and take and flexibility.
All right, so these three policies will come back to the, next, to the regular session for approval. The next topic on the agenda is the recall petitions. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
I think I can make the motion. I don't think I can move it.
I'll make the motion to approve the recall petition.
Resolution? It's the resolution we need to.
Resolution.
Approve. All right, so Bruce has made a motion to approve the resolution, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Katie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Or she carries?
Abstained.
Okay. Oh, Katie abstained.
I think I can still move if I abstain.
Board professional.
Is that a 40 then?
401?
Yes, thank you. Board professional development, I believe, did I send you out an email or was it only attached to the agenda? I can't remember if I sent an email on this. But I've been speaking with Wasby and Louise Blankenheim is the Director of Government Consulting Services. And she sent two proposals. And so, right now, it is just for discussion. If the board would like to bring this back to the regular session for voting on, we may.
Did you say you sent that?
Yeah.
I think it's just attached.
Don't, no, I don't remember if I sent it in a separate email or if it's, I just sent it to Tasia and she attached it.
It's linked.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we got the links. I think we can bring it back to.
I just wanted to have a discussion about the two different possibilities. The. I don't know how to differentiate between the two. One of them is a workshop presented by a Wasby consultant and a Wasby attorney. And the other one is a workshop that is presented by a Wasby consultant. And I asked Tasia to print them out so that I could see exactly what would. Almost everything is included in both of them. It specifically states that if we go with just the Wasby consultant, it will be an onsite workshop. And it does not specifically say that in the one that is a Wasby consultant and Wasby attorney. The other thing that I talked about with Louise, they have Wasby consultants across the state. So, there's a Wasby consultant within, I think she said like a one hour and a half or so of us. But all the Wasby attorneys are in Madison. So, it's a significant difference in cost. And the other thing I wanted to point out is, do we all get this or do I only get this?
I do.
You do, okay. So, a lot of the services are available to us online.
I'll make sure the other door is.
But. You know, like with the, but we have to, we have to be willing to commit to doing them on our own. And a lot of times, my experience has been, it doesn't happen.
No, I think it needs to be a group.
And we all hear and we all understand the same thing.
And it's interactive.
Yep.
Oh, I agree.
So, I, you know, personally, I would be, I'm leaning toward the one that is just the Wasby consultant, but you know, I want to hear what everybody else thinks and, you know, it's obviously a board decision, not just mine.
I agree with just the Wasby consultant. If we want legal, I think we just bring Trevor because, I mean, I think he can talk to us.
Or Wasby, when?
I mean, I just pay up. I think just the consultants is fine.
Yep.
Roxanne?
I agree with that, you know, I mean, it's, we'll have it come back. Right?
Yeah, we're not making a decision tonight.
So, the others.
It's just a discussion.
I think it's good, I think it should happen.
Yep.
In a couple of years for sure.
Yep.
In the resolution, that the next thing then, well, we'll vote on it at the regular session. However, we're going to have to set up a date.
Right.
So, you know, you might want to think about that as well if you want it before or after the recall election. Because it hardly makes sense to do it before in my own personal opinion, but, you know, with.
But we've also tackled a couple of other things, we didn't want to have a board retreat until after. You know, we have the new board members on and now we're into August, September, we're gonna be, now we're, okay, it's just, it seems like these things push, that's why I was kind of pushing Dave on, probably not the right way, just a couple of minutes ago on the paintings, because some of that stuff tends to push and I don't want it to push if we just can make it. So, I think I'd be doing, I'd be fine with doing it before. Just as soon as we could, because they're gonna be out for a while longer, so, that's just me, but.
Okay.
I guess this is something else we would video too, so we'd have or not.
I don't know.
I missed that, but what?
We're talking about the retreat with the Wasby consultant. In the past, when we've done these, it has not been.
Did I miss a date, when were you thinking about doing?
We have not.
We were just talking about that.
You know, I don't even know when they're available yet.
Yeah, right, okay.
I think if we find out when they're available, if it's pushing closer to that, was it October? Is it recall election?
No, it's September 21st. Sept- September 21st is the election.
I was trying to understand in there, even if it's a primary, it's that date or?
No. The primary, if there has to be a primary, the primary will occur on the 21st.
Okay, but otherwise, the regular vote will occur on the 21st.
Correct.
Okay, okay, got it.
It has to be six weeks.
Maybe that's different.
Certification, but the first week doesn't count.
I, I was thinking, I was thinking it was gonna push up over, well, I guess it depends.
Well, we could.
No, but the date is the 21st.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe it would do in October.
Yeah.
Because it'll probably be, Wasby probably needed a little while.
You can check the October dates and see what they're available.
Do you have some dates for October?
I don't have any dates, I was.
But I mean, you know, we could get.
Yes, right.
Oh, sure. Anything else you want to talk about regarding the board professional development?
Thank you for bringing that on.
Sure. The next item then is the summative evaluation of the district administrator. And we do a mid, so this goes by the school year. So, we do a mid-year in December, January. You know, January, I guess, is the semester, so that would be the exact middle of the year. And then we do a summative final for the, so this is for the 2021 school year. And this would be the summative final for the district administrator. And I wanted to talk about how we would go about doing it. I was, Mark has his goals. It would probably be a good idea for you to send those out again or perhaps. What I was thinking is, these meetings get so long and tonight we have another closed session after a regular meeting. I was hoping that we could do this at, on a separate night. How does the board feel about that? On the.
We've tried to do it, I think, after a meeting and it always seems to push to a different thing. Or it goes too quick.
Well, what I can do is write up typically, you know, just where I think I'm at on those goals, give, send it out. And then however, I mean, you've got a form.
Yep.
You know, that you use. And then whatever you want to do.
So the board would need your goals and your evidence of where we, where you are. And Roxanne, you saw the form last year for the first time, Mark and Cherie have not. So I guess what I was hoping for was that we could meet perhaps on August 16th. Mark could go over his goals with us and where he's at. I could go over the forms that we've been using for the evaluations, and if there's other things that we have questions about from Mark, we could talk about it at that time. And then the, not have the board members fill in their evaluation forms until after we have a chance to meet with Mark and hear about where he is and have an opportunity to talk and ask questions.
Sixteenth, next Monday.
It is.
That's gonna be a little bit high all this stuff right now.
Okay.
But I'll get to as much as I can, you know, that sounds like it would be kind of a briefer session, I mean, if we could maybe do it before a meeting?
That's what I was just thinking on the 23rd.
The last time we had a closed session before a meeting, we started the meeting 45 minutes late.
Well, I mean, if we just adhere to it. I guess next Monday's gonna be up.
Yeah, I understand.
And if, if we're having Mark present to us and then we fill out the information after that meeting?
Yep.
I don't have an hour's, I don't have an hour's worth of things presented.
Right, I mean...
It'll probably be like a 15, 20 minute presentation, which I'll probably send to you ahead of time, so...
So do you think, are, are you saying that you'd rather do it after the regular session meeting?
I do, I'm fine doing it before, I'm fine going to that 5:30.
Well, if you do it at 5 o'clock, that way it gives you time.
Well, not everybody is home from work by 5 o'clock.
I'll make it. That'll be, two weeks will be enough time, and I'll get it out ahead of time too, so you have all of it.
Even if we start at 5:15, 45 minutes?
If you need to continue some other time, we'll do it.
I guess I'd be more comfortable if we're gonna do it in conjunction with a regular meeting, I'd be more comfortable doing it after, especially if it's really only gonna take 15 or 20 minutes. You know, other people are either way from the cities, and I know you drive from the cities as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's easier for me to go after, I mean, but I, I know how it goes after, I don't want to be throwing the towel on it either, you know, because it'd be scary.
Well, it would be the, I mean, we could still do the next one on a separate night.
Okay, yeah, if he's just presenting, then yeah, sure, we can put it after, that's fine. That'll probably be easier, like you said.
All right, so at the 23rd meeting, and Mark, you're gonna send out information by email prior to that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And I can send out the forms prior to that, so people have a chance to at least look at them as well. Um, Tasia, I've been saying August 23rd, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else we need to discuss with that item? All right, then topics for action, would anybody like to make a motion for that portion?
Make a motion to approve 16, 1, no, or A1 and B1 and 2.
Okay, so the athletics activities personnel update, the Walden voices.
And Margaret Johnson.
And Margaret and Johnson.
Yes.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have enough people here right now, or is...
Cherie.
Cherie's still, yeah, okay.
Yes, I...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The personnel update. We had a person who we just hired in June resign. And we had another person, Britta Bergstrom, who was hired for a high school one-year long-term sub-English position. So Shannon is requesting that we change, in the change tab, add Britta Bergstrom from high school one-year long-term sub-English to 1.0 FTE English, a permanent position. And add Chad Erbst, the person who is leaving us, to the exit tab, effective July 15th, 2021. And you can see in the tab for intakes that she already has someone lined up to take that long-term sub-teacher English in place. All right? So I make a motion that we approve the personnel agenda with the amendment to the change tab and the exit tab. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Roxanne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then motion carries. Once around the table, Cherie, do you have anything you'd like?
Yes, wondering, I know we've got some of our construction projects that are wrapping up. Are we any closer to being able to open up meetings to the public?
We have.
In a larger space to accommodate more people?
So we do have the option now of going over to the elementary school, we just got that cleaned up. We're holding our, that meeting tomorrow night in the elementary school, so that space is the most conducive to larger crowds, so I would say, yes, you have that capability if you decide to go that direction. And then we also have the, the live stream connection over there too.
So could we move forward with that with our August 23rd meeting?
Is it necessary? I mean, typically, we hold the meetings here unless there's something going on where there's a large crowd.
So my question would be then, if we continue meeting here, will we allow everybody in who wants to come in?
Did we allow everybody in tonight, Mark?
No, we have to monitor a little bit, there was, there was probably an additional eight to 10 people outside.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Maybe we, we try it for next meeting and the next couple over there, and if, if no one left, um...
If anyone happens outside, you might need a...
Tomorrow night?
I'm just kidding. Uh, we'll, you know, we could sure try it, it's up to you guys, if you want, I mean, we'll, like I say, we probably had a half a dozen, eight people outside, uh...
Try and see what it looks like over there and see how it works, and if we have issues with videoing or any other stuff, sound, then, you know, obviously we come back, but let's just, let's try it for the next one or the next couple, and again, if we get back to where it's typical, where there's eight people here, it's all admin, we can back over.
Yes.
I think, sorry, I think it's also before that, as soon as maybe we want to check with our newly approved live stream coordinators if they are available to do so, because technically, all the technology pieces, if we want to make sure that we can stream, we want to make sure those in line.
Yeah, and so we're, if you notice, we're splitting those duties because now, what's the name, is the soccer coach. And so, so should we just say if they're available to do that, you want to move over there for this next meeting, see how it goes?
Let's try it.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, live stream coordinators are available.
Yeah.
Anything else, Cherie?
Do you have to have our meetings shut down, or if there's comments that are made that we're not able to stream? I guess I would just like to see what are the options we might have should we have issues down the road.
Oh, that's a YouTube's concern, yeah.
Right, so if, if YouTube is continuing to do that, what are our other alternatives? I'm not techy, so somebody else with a higher pay level probably would know that.
Yeah, and, and we're having our tech people look at that too, how we can, if there's more alternatives.
All right.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Katie?
No, I'm good.
Um, Roxanne?
Nothing.
Bruce?
Tomorrow night, this return to school meeting, what board members, I guess, are planning to attend?
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up, that was what I was gonna...
Okay, you are, Laura, I'm guessing you are?
Well, I didn't last year, but last year we had three board members there, so that we had one board member at each, because we break out by building level.
Right, we're going to, but you're not conducting board business tomorrow night, so I don't think that's an issue.
Wanted to make sure, yeah.
But I just wanted to know if we were gonna have three board members, well, last year we did, and I'm...
I'm going only because I put it on my calendar, so I can go, and so I will go.
And you have a child at the high school, so I would think that you'd be interested. Uh, Bruce, did you want to go and, you know, observe at the elementary meeting? And, you know, you're a parent of an elementary child too, so there's no reason you couldn't participate as a parent.
I probably will be attending. I just, yeah, I didn't want it to be someone right on my, there are four board members here, they're none.
Again, that's not an issue because you're not conducting board business, like, if you all went to the same graduation party, you can do that, right?
Just can't, but I, it was just weird because it's one that is a school, meeting in line, something come up. Yeah, I'll probably be at the, okay.
Okay. Um, and if Patty Jo can go to the elementary one, or I mean, the middle school one, I think she, oh, maybe she doesn't have a middle school. Does she have a middle school kid now?
Might just be elementary and high school.
Well, I'll check, and if possible, I'll try to make it if Patty Jo cannot.
Are we breaking up into those groups this year?
Yeah, we're gonna arrange it, you know, kind of middle school, high school, and elementary, because there's different issues at different buildings and different concerns that, and again, we're looking for input into, you know, what they want to see.
Thanks for putting it together, Mark.
Yeah, thank you.
It's okay, it's, it'll be, I like this kind of meetings, they're good, good to let people talk.
All right, I will make a motion then to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Part N1, Part N C, to consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of public employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction, and Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Part N1, Part N G, to confer with legal counsel to render oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved. The purpose of the closed session will be to discuss the status of the matter and the board's strategy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bruce. All in favor?
Laura, can you do a roll call?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Um, Cherie?
Cherie, can you hear us still?
Now I can, yes.
Okay.
So do you approve the motion?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
We're gonna do the OCR one right away, Trevor.
All right, we are now in closed session.